Welcome to the Tuesday, January 24th, 2023 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions with Nate.
Hi, Nate Marino, Student Representative.
Dustine Puma.
Good evening, Joe Messina, School Business.
Good evening, Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Anthony Tenero.
Daniela Fainis.
Rob Mullin.
Please rise.
David Sandin, OPM, Left Field.
Doug Roberts, J C J Architecture.
Chad Bertrand, Fontaine Brothers.
Evening, David Fontaine with Fontaine Brothers.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek a motion to approve the January 10th, 2023 School Committee Meeting Minutes and the January 17th Budget Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 401. Citizen time, seeing none. Correspondence? Mr. Woodlock, is there any?
I have none at this time.
None, great. Personnel, we have notification for intent to retire for Donna Walker, T E S Paraprofessional of over 16 years of service, Betsy McCarthy, T E S Paraprofessional of over 17 years of service, and Kathy Pollan, T H S Paraprofessional of over 19 years of service. Congratulations to you all and good luck. Share the success, Nate.
So, at the elementary school today, they kicked off their Great Kindness Challenge. I'm sure you saw some pictures of that on social media. The staff greeted students at arrival with kind signs and posters. They hope that their students heartfelt gestures of gratitude, sincere offers to help, and thoughtful acts of kindness lift the spirits throughout the elementary school community. T E S staff has worked tirelessly this year, particularly in the area of E L A. They have adopted a new E L A curriculum, called Into Learning, administered D I B E L S reading assessments. And I'm sure there's a way to pronounce that acronym, but I'm not going to try. That took place in the lower elementary level, and then they also maximized their phonics instructions using foundations in K through 3, and engaged in professional development centered around the science of reading. So, great job to T E S. At T M S, students had Paulette Morin in to do her Pyramids and Pharaohs presentation for the 6th grade, which fit in perfectly with their curriculum. They'd like to thank the P T O for their continued support of that program. Student Council is preparing for the annual Cardboard Sled Derby prior to February break. It will be a whole afternoon of fun and food regardless of however much snow we have in the ground. Teachers had a great professional development day on the early release day last week with school-wide discussions about grading and teaching strategies. Earlier in January, T M S had Becky DeSmith in to work with their 6th graders on the keys to literacy work they've been doing. And lastly, at T H S, the T P S band will be holding its annual winter concert on Wednesday, January 25th at 6:30. Tickets are now on sale for the Newsies Show. T H S and T M S Theater have been rehearsing and preparing for the performances, which will take place from February 2nd through February 5th. The latest M I A A Winter Sports Power Rankings have been released with girls basketball, boys basketball, and boys ice hockey, all ranked in the top 10 of their divisions. So, great job to them. Best of luck to all the teams as they continue to push forward towards the postseason tournaments. And also, High School Open House will be taking place on January 26th from 6:30 to 8:00 P. M. Parents will have the opportunity to meet with trimester 2 and 3 teachers, and that is all I have.
Great, thanks Nate.
No problem.
Subcommittee update, Budget Subcommittee, Danielle.
The Budget Subcommittee met last Tuesday evening. During the meeting, Mr. Messina gave us a deep dive into the 2022-2023 expenses, as well as a look into the projected expenses for next year in '23 and '24. He'll be giving a presentation of those numbers to the committee this evening. In addition, we also discussed user fees and decided, as a Subcommittee, to take a deep dive to user fees as well as parking fees after the FY '24 budget cycle is completed. We will be meeting again next Tuesday at 6:30 to discuss the revenue portion of the budget with Mr. Messina, who will have a full update on the revenue portion at our next School Committee meeting on the 4th.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Mr. Woodlock.
Yes, thank you. So, tonight, we're going to really focus on the middle school building project. As we talked about at our last meeting, we said you'd start to see some things happening around here. So, quite a bit of trees came down this week, you saw fencing go up. So, it is going to be an active site very soon, so, if not already. So, we have David Sandin here amongst others who we've already had introduced, but he's going to kick off a presentation today to, as we had promised, share some of the information that the Building Committee has been getting, and then it'll open up for questions for School Committee members. So, I'll turn it over to David.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Woodlock. So, the presentation you're about to see is about 90% to 95% the same presentation that was presented to the School Building Committee on November 30th. The only difference is that some of the data that this committee is seeing tonight is updated data from a few months ago versus what we had for data at the time for November 30th. As you can see, we have quite the project team here, representatives from Fontaine and J C J. So, I will talk about cost drivers affecting construction, some data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Engineering News Record data, and how we compare with a sampling of other M S B A projects. We will then provide a high level of what was accomplished with V E on November 30th, and then I'll speak to the Department of Revenue Application Process. And then, my recommendation that I brought to the committee on November 30th, which the committee, there was a consensus to go in that direction, timing of early release packages, and the upcoming Fall Town Meeting, and then a permitting and construction activity update, and then a brief discussion about lead time for various products. What's that? Oh, V E, Value Engineering, excuse me. Sorry for the acronym. So, major cost drivers for escalation, as you all know, with, I'm going to just use my slide as well. With the supply chain challenges that were a rippling effect as a result of COVID, the invasion of Ukraine, and the timing of that, there's a project that I am involved in where just the timing of that invasion and with the cost of diesel pricing, it was an extremely large site work project, and just the escalation alone with diesel cost that project and that buyout about $300,000, just because of the timing of that. Severe weather, and let me expand on that. Over the years, a lot of distribution and manufacturing has been consolidated. You know, they may be materials out there with all different name tags on it, but when you peel back the layers, it could be manufactured in one location in the country. And what happens is that there could be severe weather, and all of a sudden, that one location that manufactures probably 80% of some product within the market, all of a sudden is severely affected, and then there's a rippling effect across the country. Labor shortage, obviously, with the labor force, we're competing with all other industries for labor. And then, as a result of the above, material pricing has risen at an unprecedented rate. Next slide? So, I need to use my screen because I can't read that far. So, what you have in front of you is some data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it's a Producer Price Index. It's similar to the Consumer Price Index. The only difference is that the Consumer Price Index looks at a lot of different indices, and as an aggregate, it's the Consumer Price Index. And a lot of times, sometimes the Consumer Price Index, they take out energy and they take out food, because that's extremely volatile all the time. The beauty of a Producer Price Index is that it's very focused, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics has one solely on new school construction in the K to 12 market. So, what we have here is a chart and data for a 12-month percent change over the course of a few years, and you can see throughout 2020 and 2021, the 12-month percent change has been pretty low. But what is highlighted in red for 2022, you're in the teens, double-digit numbers, unprecedented, and you can see the chart with the spike. We identified that the project budget was established in February of '22, and then you can just see a few months later, you know, the increase kept coming throughout '22, leading into and at the May 2022 Town Meeting. The chart to the far right is the Producer Price Index with the values. Instead of the percent change from year to year by month to month, it's the, just the index value. So, in February of '22, the index value was 195.2. 10 months later, here we are at the end of December of '22, it has risen to 223.6, which is a 14.5% increase in a 10-month period, which is, again, unprecedented. Next slide? So, this is the Engineering News Record Annual Building Cost Index within the Boston Market. Engineering News Record is, I'd say, kind of the leading publication. It's the go-to data source for the construction industry for tracking costs. And you can see that, you know, over the course of a series of years, going back to November of '06 to November of '22, you can see the increase that has occurred. And then, you know, obviously, throughout '21 and '22, you can see the spike of 14% and 10%. And the red line indicates where our project budget was established. So, you know, we're obviously anticipating to be over budget, but you can see that there's many other projects in the M S B A pipeline that were severely over budget just because of the timing of their project versus Tingsboro. What's interesting is that over a 15-year span, the average increase from year to year was 3.4%, and over a two-year span, it ended up being 24.6%. Next slide? So, this one is from the same data source, but this is for material costs. And over a 15-year span, the average year increase was 3%, and over a two-year span, it was 52%. So, it's laid out in the same manner. You can see where the red line is, where the project budget was established. We were on the tail end of, you know, the 2021 escalation, but we still experienced it, and '22, you know, the year of '22 was 19% of escalation, which, when you look at the prior years, you know, that is not the norm. Next slide? And when we put this deck together, just because we were data gathering, we thought we'd go back, we thought we'd see how far back we could go. So, we went back 37 years, and on average, it was 2%. So, you can just see that, you can look at the trend over the years, that what has happened over the past couple of years has never happened before. So, this is a comparison, just to see where Tingsboro fits in with other projects in the M S B A capital pipeline. The Groton Project, which is, you know, towards the top third I'm involved in, I can speak to that, you know, that, we had to go back to Town Meeting. It was successful. Somerset, I believe, was not successful. There's other projects that, you know, they're following in having to go back to Town Meeting. And the two lines that are highlighted in green, obviously, are the Tingsboro. When this was presented to the Building Committee on November 30th, we presented data that if V E was accepted, you would go from 6.5% to 3.9%. But I wanted to just show that, you know, this is, definitely, there's a correlation of the timing of the project and the timing of just where you sat within the calendar year between the two years of '21 and '22. Next slide? This is a graphic representation of the same data that you saw on the previous slide, but just in a different format. And what's, you know, what's positive is that, you know, Tingsboro is on the low end of what has happened with the industry and M S B A projects in the pipeline. Next slide? So, this is a little bit of a graphic on the journey of the value engineering process that we've had with the project. So, back in July of '22, post schematic, we had a post schematic estimate check-in with Fontaine. At that time, the construction control budget, $66 million. We identified at that time a potential for 5.8 of a shortfall. By August 24th, 4.8 million of value engineering was identified, 1.2 was approved by the committee as a Phase 1 value engineering process. Then in November, we had a design development estimate check-in as well. The control budget stayed the same at 66 million, but at that time, instead of a 5.8 anticipated shortfall, it went to 4.3. So, from July to November, about 1.5 of value engineering decisions were materialized. And then, at our meeting with the School Building Committee on November 30th, 1.7 million was identified to be recommended to the committee. Actually, that night, the committee roughly identified and approved 1.75 million. And, you know, based on the acceptance of that V E, right now, there's an anticipated shortfall of 2.6 million. Next slide? So, this is just the same information, different format, big picture, control budget, 66 million. The Fontaine Design Development Estimate is 70 million point 3. The anticipated shortfall was 4.3. The committee approved, I mean, this slide is a little bit outdated, but the committee at that evening approved about 1.75, so the anticipated shortfall is about 2.5, even though this says 2.6. Next slide? So, this is an actual list of the value engineering that was approved, and you can see that the actual approved V E was $1,787,129. And the shortfall, the anticipated shortfall, I'm going to round, is $2.5 million. Next slide? Yes, nope? So, the Department of Revenue, the D O R, I don't know exactly when they issued it, but I know they issued it last year. They issued a informational guideline report. And essentially, what it is, it's an application for municipalities to fill out and submit to the Department of Revenue, where the Director of Accounts, he or she, will review the application and render a decision. And what the application is, is that districts can make a case, and with backup data and documentation, show that they have a project that was approved. The project did not grow in square footage, it did not change in scope, it's just the pricing or the price, the anticipated price, has drastically escalated as a result of rippling effects from COVID. But, again, the scope did not change, the program did not change, the square footage did not change. And based on the data that they receive, they would make a decision where it would allow the district, the municipality, to go back to Town Meeting and get additional funds authorized to borrow to pay for the original authorization that they received earlier without having to go to a ballot-wide vote process. It would just happen at Town Meeting. So, I actually did this process with the Town of Groton, and it successfully passed at a subsequent Town Meeting. So, that's the process with the Department of Revenue. Next slide? So, this is where we laid out options on November 30th to the Building Committee. We have Option A, which is utilize available ARPA funds, if any, or utilize additional ARPA funds as they may become available. Option B would be submit the application to the D O R leading up to the Fall 2023 Town Meeting and receive D O R approval. And then, increase borrowing at the Fall 2023 Town Meeting through a Town Meeting process with no ballot vote. Option C, increase borrowing at Town Meeting through Town Meeting, setting increase would be done or funded through the current town levy. That is above my pay grade to comment on. And then, Option D is increase borrowing at the Fall '23 Town Meeting through a Town Meeting and ballot vote with no D O R application required. Next slide? So, our recommendation to the Building Committee on November 30th of last year was to utilize Option A and B. Option A is just if ARPA funds are available, whatever's available now, or what may become available. And then, to stay the course and do a combination, a hybrid of A and B, we'll submit the application to the D O R sometime this summer, late summer, leading up to the Fall '23 Town Meeting, and then increase the borrowing at the Fall Town Meeting in '23 with no ballot vote. Another recommendation rationale that we explained is that, as the project continues to move forward, we're going to have continuing buyouts of the scope, so we'll be able to track, are we leaning towards an anticipated 2.5 million, or 2.6, or 2.2, or whatever it may be. Also, in relation to, we've put V E on the table, value engineering items, and they may be a desire from the community for certain things that, not accepted, it needs to be incorporated into the project. That being said, I recommended that there could be two articles at Town Meeting. It could be Article X, which would be an additional amount of, we'll fill in the blank at that time, and that would be for the construction of the middle school canopy, the bus drop-off canopy, softball field, and all of the softball amenities to basically make it a, you know, softball field day one on opening. If that article were to pass, we would rescind or retract the second article on the floor. The second article on the floor would be Article XY, we'd fill in the blank, and it may be, you know, it would be, instead of a softball field ready for softball, it may be just an open field that would be, we'll call it pad-ready for softball, but not softball right away on day one. And the development of these two articles and the costs will be a, you know, work in progress with the School Building Committee. Next slide? This is a little bit of a timing of how we see it. So, we are at the end of January, and tomorrow, via Zoom, we will be doing an approval, a recommendation to award for early abatement and demolition, as well as a Fontaine Amendment Number 1. So, it's our first substantial kind of buyout. As we move into the end of February and into March, we'll do another buyout of additional site enabling, site work, superstructure, concrete. Towards the end of March into April, we'll have a 60% CD estimate. Think of that as a check-in estimate. As we move forward into the summer, we'll be doing an award of building envelope trades, and then we'll have a 90% estimate check-in. Excuse me. We will be submitting the Department of Revenue application in the summer, and then in late September, early October, first, second week of October, there'll be awards of the M E P and the interior trades. And, you know, we'll have a really good understanding of where we are leading into Town Meeting, and I have another timeline on the next slide. So, if you ignore the bullets up above, I mean, for transparency, it's basically, those are estimated buyouts of just the direct costs for the early release packages. But what's important to note is the chart at the bottom. So, in June of '22, with the award of Fontaine, engaging Fontaine, bringing them on as the C M, about 9% of the control budget for construction was procured. Tomorrow, we're going to be authorizing Fontaine with $1.3 million of an amendment. So, the total under contract would be 7.2 or 11%. And then, as we move down the calendar year in March, it'll go from 11% to 33% bought out, and then in July to 54%. And then, by the first, second week of October, we're going to be 95% bought out. So, leading into Town Meeting, we will really know where we are. Next slide? So, from a project permitting and construction enabling update, you know, obviously, this is not legible, it's not meant to be legible, but it's meant to show that. The project team has really laid out everything that's required for permitting. It has all fallen into place extremely well. All of the permitting submissions happened in November of last year. We had a Select Board hearing in December, which we received approval for the special permit required for the project. We had a series of Conservation Commission meetings in January, and we received approval. Fontaine has mobilized, as people, as everyone can see with this campus, and they will continue with what I would call an early enabling phase, abatement and demolition over the next couple of months, and then moving into construction in earnest commencing sometime in April. And then, at this point, I am going to pass over this slide to someone from Fontaine, who can speak to this a little bit more intelligently than me.
So, we wanted to share with the committee
Thanks, David.
What the project has been seeing for long lead times, specifically related to Tingsboro that could have an impact to our construction schedule and kind of what the team has done so far to accommodate these items. So, we kind of listed out, you know, six or seven items on the screen here, starting from the top, structural steel and decking. That, along with the elevator, what we're doing to accommodate the lead time there is actually putting that as part of ERP 2 package, as David mentioned, which is basically your superstructure. We put elevator in there to accommodate that 26-plus week lead time. So, J C J is working on preparing that document set. One of the bigger items on here is switchgear. Throughout the industry, right now, we're seeing long lead on switchgear through every Fontaine project we have. Right now, the team is looking into pre-purchasing the switchgear, which would then be transferred over to the electrician once those guys are on board. And then, a few of these other items, your DOAS units, which is just your HVAC rooftop units, the generator, and then some miscellaneous A V security items. Right now, we feel as though those lead times are not going to impact our construction schedule. We're keeping a close eye on those items as time goes on, and, you know, we'll continue to track those. But that's basically the gist of items we've been tracking so far. One item I didn't talk about, exterior sheathing. We've heard, you know, bulk orders of that stuff can cause delays on projects. What we're going to do to accommodate that is actually, we're hearing that smaller deliveries are being fulfilled in a more reasonable timeframe. So, we'll work closely with the framer, set up a schedule with those guys, and make sure that as we're working through sections of the new school, we nominated A, B, C kind of wings of the building. We'll have those guys release at the appropriate timeframe to keep progress going on site.
Chad, for context, April 23 start, when will substantial completion be?
I can answer that. One thing, before I answer that, I just wanted to, you know, comment that this is a living, breathing document. Fontaine is tracking it carefully. I'd have to say, if we were to present this two months ago, you'd see roofing on this. Couple months ago, you know, depending on where your source, you know, the source you were getting data from.
Couple of months ago, you know, depending on where your source, you know, the source you were getting data from, roofing could be anywhere from eight, 10 to 12 months out. Now we're getting feedback from the industry that it's anywhere from eight to 12 weeks, not eight to 12 months. So it's a living, breathing document that Fontaine will adjust accordingly. In fact, we actually had roofing, I believe in package three or two.
It wasn't two.
It wasn't two. So we moved it back to three, just to align with, you know, what the industry is telling us. Regarding Doug's question about starting in April and substantial completion, right now, the, the goal and what the project team is endeavoring to do is to deliver the project for April of '25. However, once more trades get on board and there's scheduled buy-in and the lead times and what is known, we'll say is a little more solidified, that schedule will be revisited. For some reason, if it cannot be delivered for April, we've worked out an alternate plan with Fontaine where there would be a teacher move that, and don't, you know, I may not, I'm not going to have the date correct because I don't know the exact date for April of 25, for June of 25. But the idea is that the last day of school for conversation, if it's a Friday, bless you, the third week of June, there would be a personal belongings move that weekend. We've done this move many a times. We've moved high schools over a weekend in the past. But what would happen is that the building would be ready, the classrooms would be ready, the offices would be ready. So personal belongings would be moved that weekend. The building would be finalized and finished over the summer. And then we've done this on other school projects where the administration and the teachers can either come in two weeks or a week earlier before the building's turned over. And I call that kind of the acclamation where, you know, the, the administration gets acclimated to the building. So that's the backup plan, but, you know, we're endeavoring to still deliver it for April. But more, you know, more news to come.
Are we purchasing items today that we would normally be purchasing three months from now, six months from now, just because of the lead times? And is that driving some of the costs that could potentially come down?
I can say that Fontaine will be purchasing things earlier than, you know, three, four years ago, before the craziness happened. As far as your question about, is it better to wait and kind of, we'll say, roll the dice if prices come down? That I don't know. I mean, my opinion, and I'll rely on Fontaine to, you know, obviously provide their opinion, and they may disagree. But, you know, the ability to, I, I'm a big fan, when I was in the field, I was a big fan of I'd rather be looking at it than looking for it. So I've always taken the approach of get your hands on it and get it on site. So you're looking at it, you're not looking for it. And that's kind of my opinion.
Yeah, we would agree with that. I think that, you know, the stuff that we're purchasing now, the abatement demo package and stuff that's going before the committee tomorrow is being purchased in the normal timeframe than it would be. That's work that doesn't have a lot of lead time or materials. You know, what we've strategized is buying some of those items, you know, earlier than you could have several years ago. But it's the way that us and, you know, the industry has been buying stuff now for the better part of probably two years to accommodate the construction schedule. So what you're up against is that because everyone building schools, building office buildings, building whatever is purchasing earlier, that's kind of just become, you know, the, the course of business to get in the manufacturer's queue. So we feel that the way that it's structured now for the packages will allow us to complete it, you know, within the timeframe. And a lot of those items that you see there, like the switchgear that Chad mentioned, is your main, you know, piece of electrical equipment that without it, you can't get permanent power tied in. Those are the big items. We are deferring, you know, the best that we can on items that we feel, you know, we can wait on and pricing may come down. We like to take advantage of that. But the items that we're, you know, recommending to purchase now are items that are critical to the schedule that without them, you know, the other systems can't be completed.
All right, thank you.
I have a logistical question in the shorter term. What are we looking at in terms of lost parking spaces with all of the fencing and everything that's going up now to start the construction process? Where are we looking at in terms of student-staff parking loss?
Yeah, so by the end of this week, the tree removal process should be completed. So the trees are actually all cut down at this point. And right now, we're just working on clearing those out, chipping up those trees. So next week, the only thing that Fontaine will be taking over for what we're calling Phase One, which is demo of the gym building, is the back parking lot. I'll call it the north side of the existing middle school facility.
You're still taking the student overflow parking area?
That'll be turned back, that'll be turned back over for probably the start of next week.
If I might jump into, you know, we anticipate we are going to lose some parking spots throughout the construction process. So there's a pretty thorough review that was conducted on how many parking spots we're using, how many excess parking spots we have. So we might have some tight, you know, event situations, which we will work, you know, as an admin team with the building principals and/or through the district. But right now, it looks like throughout the construction, there'll be ample parking for both staff and students. It shouldn't be a problem.
What was the contingency on the original budget?
A percentage or a dollar value?
Dollar value, please.
If you give me a moment, I'll have to look at my computer.
So why don't you look that up, maybe we can just talk at a high level. So we're over 5.8 million before you do value engineering, which is really just a fancy way of saying, cut things out that we want, right? So before we do the value engineering, we're already almost 6 million over budget. I guess I don't understand, one, how we got there. And I know you had your graphs. I think we should have taken into account the state of the world at that point. I think we probably should have been a little more aggressive on predicting, but, you know, that's behind us. But depending on what the contingency is, say it's higher than 6 million. Do you remember, Tony?
I think it's 12.8.
Okay, so.
We approved 82 or 83.
Somewhere.
Say it's $12 million contingency. Does 5.8 is above that contingency or would be absorbed by that contingency?
So if you're asking if we could use some of the contingency within the construct, within the total project budget to pay for the anticipated shortfall, is that?
Correct.
Yeah, we, we could do that, but I would strongly advise not to do that because just from historical data and from our collective experience, all of us in the industry, you know, you will utilize some of those contingencies along the journey of a project.
If I could, that five, the 5.8 is not above the contingency, it's without the contingency.
Okay, so let's be optimistic, say things are starting to get back to normal and we go over another 3 million. So now we're at 9 million over the original budget. But we won't know that until, you know, sometime near the completion of the project, right? Because we have to pay for everything. So we need to approve additional funding to cover this overage this fall, right? Based on your timeline?
Correct, I, I, I'm not agreeing with the number you mentioned, but.
Which number aren't you agreeing with?
Well, you, you mentioned about 9 million. All I'm saying is that as we lead into the fall town meeting, we will go to the town and say, based on, you know, the data we have, based on the awards that have been done and our best forecasting, and a contingency assessment of the project, we will ask for additional funding. I, I don't feel it's going to be 9 million. I, I don't know what it's going to be, but I don't feel it's going to be 9 million.
Right, so that was just me just kind of throwing numbers out there, like total overage, including the 5.8.
So, so right now, the anticipated overage that we will go to town meeting is 2.5.
But that does not include the VE we took out.
It does include the VE. It does include.
It does include all, everything.
Yes, yes, yeah. So, so hypothetically, if the desire is to put some value engineering items back into the project, as of today, what we know, it wouldn't be 2.5. So Article, we'll call it Article One, could be 3.5. And we would say for 3.5, you get all of this. And if that article passes, then we would rescind or retract the second article. The second article would be, I would say, a bare bones, this is what we need to complete the project.
Yeah, I, I understand all that. I guess I'm, what I'm trying to get to, and doing a poor job of it, is at what point will we know the final cost of this project? Because it'll be sometime after the fall town meeting, correct?
Well, the, the, the final, final cost of the project will be when the project is 100% complete.
So April of '25?
It, it would be the winter, it would be the fall of '26, excuse me, of '25.
Okay. So assuming the town comes together this fall, we approve more money, we get to the end and there's extra money that was available through the contingency and the additional funds. What happens to that money?
So I'm going to, I'm speaking a little bit out of my lane. If Matt Hanson was here, I'd have him speak to it. But what we've done with other projects is that a lot of times, the district municipalities will borrow a certain amount of money, but not the entire amount. And we have an analysis where we have an understanding of what MSBA is going to provide for reimbursement. So, you know, it's, we have, we start off with understanding what the anticipated worst-case district share will be. So I'm going to say 90% of that is borrowed. And then as we get towards the end of the project, we start looking at, the project may come in under budget. So what happens is that that money sometimes is never even borrowed. Or instead of borrowing the last 10%, and let's just say the last 10% was $3 million, I'm making up a number. The town may say, you know what, we're only going to take a short-term ban for, say, 1.5. So then that remaining 1.5 is never borrowed. So I, I, I'd have to say it's never returned because it's just was never borrowed.
And if I, and if I could, I'd like to address the cutting out the things that we want statement to the testament of the school building committee. They have not sacrificed any program or any design elements in the project. They've tasked us with looking at them differently.
No, but we are sacrificing a softball field. So that leaves us one field in town for our girls, but we have multiple fields for the boys. So for me, it's a matter of equity, right? So.
Understood.
And it's, it's a big issue for me and for a lot of people in town. You know, it's, it needs to be fair. And so I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to understand the process. So we get to the end, we're not as over budget as we think. You know, historically, does that value engineering, everything that got cut out that, you know, was in the original scope, do you say, oh, we didn't spend this money, we can go do that? Or does that now need to go back for approval?
No, so along the journey of constructing the building, if we feel that the contingency that we have earmarked and secured for the purposes of dealing with things that come up during construction, if we feel that we can reverse and put certain scopes of work back into the project, that lies within the governance of the school building committee to make that decision. We've done that on many, everyone at this table have done that on many other projects. And we will look at the items that were agreed upon. I mean, there were certain, early on, value engineering's items that were agreed upon that the train has left. We can't put that back in, the design is being done. But yes, certain elements could be put back in. And with the softball field being the last piece of this project, that could be something that could be put back in. But at fall town meeting in '23, if it's the, the will of the community to, they don't want to roll the dice and they want to guarantee that the softball field is going to be 100% done, complete as part of the project, then I would strongly recommend that that is part of the, you know, we'll call it Article One, the first article. So that would be my opinion.
Again, David, it's technically still part of the project as an alternate.
It is, as an alternate, correct.
Yeah, I, I understand, I guess.
If I could touch on it too, even the bus overhang canopy will have the infrastructure in place.
Correct.
When it's being built. That if at the end of the project, we can put that back in, it's just a matter of putting up the canopy. So the electrical will be the.
We're, we're looking at putting in.
Foundation.
Yeah, we're looking at putting in the foundations and empty spare conduit.
So as a co-chair of the school building committee, we want all these things in there and we're going to do everything in our power to make it that we, we've done everything we can do to make sure that if we do put it back, it's not going to cost us a ton later. And it's a little easier process to put it back.
I, I also want to echo what Doug Roberts was saying about, you know, the value engineering process. The, the building was always 112,784.
Got it.
I got it right this time. And the building is still 112,784. The delivery of education, the delivery of the educational program has remained unchanged, it was never touched.
Fully air-conditioned.
Yep, still fully air-conditioned.
No, I appreciate that. I guess I'm just disappointed we're here a year later, after many of us did a lot of, you know, campaigning for this school. And one of the big things that we were campaigning on was we're in a better position than Lowell, than Groton, because we have the benefit of knowing, hey, the pandemic's here, so these guys are planning for it. And I understand, you know, maybe things will, Ukraine messes things up and it's a little more aggressive. But $6 million over in a year, it, it, it's just very disappointing. It seems like, you know, it, it makes me feel like I was wrong to campaign for this, saying, you know, let's trust these guys, when that's a lot of money in such a short period of time. And I know you have data going back 37 years, we didn't have a pandemic last 37 years. You know, so you have to treat that differently. You, you can't look at historic data because there is no history on something like that. That's just the comment I have. I appreciate you guys coming out, I appreciate all the work you're doing, so, you know, I do want to say that.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, at the time, speaking with, you know, the experts in the industry, you know, a lot of feedback was, this is unsustainable, what is happening. And I know for a while, you know, just that was the outlook, it just was not sustainable. I'm, I'm equally disappointed as well. You know, I, I've never in my career had to go back to a community and ask for more money. It was the, the, the worst, lowest part of my career. Not something I enjoy, and I, I'm equally disappointed just the way it has happened.
David, can you speak to, if we do have to go back to town meeting for a vote, is this a two-thirds majority we're looking for, or is it a simple majority?
No, it's two-thirds, two-thirds at town meeting. And, and with the approval from the DOR, it would be, it does not go to ballot.
Okay.
I, I'd like to piggyback on Becky's question a little bit, because I feel like this is a question the community may ask. The numbers are not showing outside of the dead exclusion at this point. If we've already approved 82-point-whatever-it-was-million, logistically, why is this going back to town meeting? Just because I have a feeling that's a question that may come up. And so if there's anybody watching the meeting, they'll hear the answer now, rather than third-hand.
I just, if I understand it correctly, it's because we're anticipating we're going to go over.
Which I understand, but it looks like it's still within the original dead exclusion that we approved. I guess that's where my confusion.
Oh.
No, 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 that's construction costs, there are other project costs.
Okay.
There's, I'm sorry.
82 million.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yep. I misunderstood your question. The, the numbers you saw were just construction costs, not total project budget.
Gotcha.
This may be a question for Matt Hanson, but what happens if it fails at fall meeting? Or the community decides not to vote on it? Because I know historically, people don't like to vote on big things at the special town meeting in fall, they like to push it off to May. I've seen that a number of times where somebody would make a motion to delay the vote to May. So if that were to happen, does that delay the whole project?
Well, I, I'd have to say, I think we'd have to go to the next town meeting. I think it, it would delay the project. And I think overall, at the end of the day, it would cost the project more money. And at that time, if that question is asked, I'll be prepared to provide data.
To David's earlier comment, the more that Fontaine can purchase in advance, it minimizes the risk to the project.
And I think to your, you know, question about the contingencies and stuff, there's a balance in the estimate now of, you know, what we. there's a balance in the estimate now of, you know, what we say hard construction costs and contingencies, right? And as the project moves through, those hard costs will actually be, you know, turned into subcontracts that are fixed in place with all the various subcontractors delivering the work, right? So at that point, you know, contractually, they're responsible for delivering it at that cost, you know, including material price escalation. So as those costs become more and more fixed, in any process, those contingencies come down, right? Because you've accounted for it in the contracting process. Um, so I think that, um, you know, to, to your question and, and, you know, point about being, I, I think that many of us in the industry are now living through the past two years saying, well, you know, we thought it was unsustainable, right? And it turned out it was, and we're looking at it and we are seeing, you know, the costs right now level across the industry from our current bid results and stuff like that, which I think is a good thing. Um, but the reason that those contingencies to date, you know, haven't been dipped into is to account for that continued possibility of it continuing to rise. Um, so I think that with the timing of what David's proposing, it'll be good because we'll have a lot of those fixed, you know, contract bid results to say, here's what it is, here's where the risk is. We'll know, for example, um, you know, a good idea of the actual cost of the alternates and everything. So people can really look at data, um, that they can feel strongly is, is, you know, locked in.
So technically, it is possible to approve more money in the fall, get to the end of the project and still be within that initial $82 million budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's good news.
And as far as the escalation percentage that you used when calculating the project, that was 5.32?
Roughly, 5.25.
5.25, something like that, which is a much higher percentage than you would normally use calculating into where we were. So it's not like.
Ye- yes.
It wasn't just, normally it would be 2% and it was escalated to 5.25.
Correct. It was higher than the norm, but, um, obviously was not.
Not high enough, but.
And when I, um, had to do a, an uncomfortable presentation in the town of Groton, I, um, did the reverse math and said that if I were to, um, come to you day one with, uh, the original appropriation, I think, um, the number was, I would have had to have been carrying 27% in escalation. And I said, if I ever went to a client and said, we're carrying 27% escalation, they would have looked at me, looked at me as if I had three heads. But it just, because you do not, you've never carried, you don't carry 27% of escalation. It just, you don't. You know, you'd be, you'd be looking for the project to fail because you're prematurely carrying too much.
Then just one more piece. Um, if Fontaine, if you could speak, um, to the committee about the contractors coming on campus and just real briefly about the, the safety precautions that are being put in place to ensure the safety of our students.
Yeah, so, um, we have a query process in place, um, with the town. So we're working with Dan Hogan with that process. And what we essentially have is a shared Excel file sheet. So before we know that a sub's coming onsite, you know, a couple of weeks in advance, we ask them to submit their query paperwork to the town. Uh, Dan then records that approval on this sheet of which Fontaine and Leftfield have access to. Um, and we check the guys, the guys will come in, our trailers aren't here yet, but they come in. They will, uh, provide a form of identification, will cross-reference into that sheet, make sure that they're queried, at which time they'll get a badge, um, that has a corresponding number with the sheet and a query sticker confirming to us as they're working onsite within the construction parameters that they've passed that process.
I also want to speak to just logistics phasing, traffic control hours, stuff like that.
Yeah, so, um, throughout the project, we have about six or seven, um, logistic plans put together for the different phases of construction. Um, we'll have, um, as we move our, our temporary fencing around to accommodate that type of stuff, we'll have signage, um, for teachers, staff, students. Um, one of our big processes that we tried to keep in place was the, um, throughout the majority of the projects, the phase that we have set up allows the teacher queue line to still exist. Um, while we have guys on the other side of the fencing, um, you know, subcontractor parking and whatnot. Also, we know that, uh, with the close proximity between the two schools, uh, new, existing, and actually also the high school, we've set up a series of, um, you know, jersey barriers that will segregate our work with staff and students that'll be passing by our fence, uh, which is just a more secure means of, you know, if we have machinery right on the other side of that fence, it keeps everybody more safe onsite. So those are kind of some of the processes that we're going through, um, to ensure the safety of everybody while we're working.
Thank you.
Covered walkways.
We will. Thanks, Doug. Yeah, so, um, while we're working on the facade of the building, uh, moving upward with the superstructure along this front sidewalk here, we'll have an overhead protection so that, uh, between the two schools, staff and students can still use that sidewalk um, and feel safe and protected as they're working overhead.
I think just to follow up to, I think something that came up in our, um, our meeting a couple of weeks ago. Can you speak to the continuity of supervision so that there, are there going to be certain people on site here that are going to know everyone that's supposed to be here and will be familiar with, uh, the workers coming and going? So, you know, say if we had someone on site that didn't belong, they would recognize.
Yeah, sure.
So our team, you know, I was going to mention that basically it's, you know, we've done a lot of work on phasing logistics plans with the team, you know, in, in advanced planning, right? But what's going to happen is as we get onsite, you know, full-time, we'll be in constant contact with the principals, superintendent, everyone in the district so that we're getting feedback on how those plans are working. Um, any adjustments that, that, you know, need to be made. Our onsite staff will have full authority to make those, um, to ensure safety. So it's a conversation basically that we're speaking with your, you know, district every day. Um, and to your point, Mike, our, our team that's here will basically be here from start to finish working with the district, um, getting to know the ins and outs and, um, your staff. So it's a, a fluid process basically that, you know, we plan and then we adjust the plan accordingly as it goes into place.
And, and one of the reasons Fontaine was selected, they have worked on active school campuses before and built buildings in close proximities to occupied buildings. So they demonstrated the ability and attentiveness to the safety of the students and the faculty, but also the indoor air quality of the existing building be occupied. Um, it was pretty unusual in the, uh, interview to hear that level of detail and thought as they approached the project.
There's also a new, uh, platform we're going to be rolling out, Skill Signal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of like a digital, uh, health card. I call it for every worker who comes on site, they'll have to take their phones, every, everybody has one now. And we'll set up QR check-ins where when they sign in, it'll automatically, essentially they'll fill in their information the first day. And then for every day thereafter, that guy comes in, he logs in, it goes on. It data logs everything online and says if his query's checked, uh, has all his information. It has all his certificates, his trainings and everything of that nature. So at any point in time, anybody on the project team can log in. And if someone's onsite that does not have an active query approval, we'll know, it'll be bright and in red. So we're working to try to make that more streamlined and a little bit more visible. Because to your point, Mike, like, new guys come on the job from time to time and you can't expect one, two, four, five guys to know every single person who's walking on. So we're trying to put as many fail safes in place to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, and that's just one of the ways we're seeing to do it. But it's, we try to make it as perfect, as perfect as possible, but, you know, it's going to be a busy site. And so we got to make sure that we're casting a safety net as wide as we can.
Yeah, but all, you know, us as a company, um, I think 80-plus percent of our work is actually public schools in Massachusetts. Um, and, you know, we've done a ton of work just like this on occupied sites. Many buildings actually much closer than how these will be. So, um, it's baked into all of our safety plans, our contracts with our subcontractors, how they operate. And you'll see a lot of, um, subcontractors that, you know, we have a ton of familiarity with, relationships with that know what we expect of them and, um, vice versa, so.
I think just some of the other things we'll do with J C J is when we do make these logistic change, changes, there won't be, um, really any impact to your ongoing workflows, your traffic patterns, except for when we turn over the new school. We'll work with J C J to create like traffic plans for both parents. Um, I don't think there's a lot of walkers that come to the school. So I don't think we have to worry so much about pedestrian foot traffic. But we'll make it so that you guys have something that you can send out to the families to say, hey, when you come back on day one, this is what the site's going to look like. Follow the blue path if you're a parent, the buses are going to be over here. And then we'll create signage onsite that kind of mirrors that same plan. So it's, it's all about the communication with everybody so they know in advance and they're not coming into something that they're not comfortable with or don't know anything about. Um, and then before turnovers and things of that other nature, we'll make sure the school's available for tours to the families so that the kids, they come in, they can view their new space before the school year, um, before they enter their new school. So we, we're very like familiar with the things that we need to do, especially some of the younger kids. And just making them feel comfortable in their home and we'll all do our best to make sure that that happens.
We've also presented orientations again to help educate so that it's not unfamiliar to people that are new to the campus. Uh, it's just part of our public outreach to support the project.
Does the committee have any other questions? Thank you, J C J, Leftfield, Fontaine. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on to item nine, new business, the fiscal '24 budget presentation. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, the Budget Subcommittee.
Mick, can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Sure. Absolutely.
You're welcome to stay if you really want, but you don't have to stay. So maybe we'll just take a, a two-minute pause.
I really thought I had a captive audience here.
There's a great basketball game going on in the gym. If you want to go watch it, it's pretty close. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Now the floor is all yours, Mr. Messina.
Feels a little, little emptier to crowd as I start talking and the crowd empties out, so. Sounds like my house too. Um, so the Budget Subcommittee did meet, uh, last Tuesday night and we began to look at the expense side of your budget for next year. Uh, as always, I, I try to focus on the, the big rocks of the district in term of finances. And, um, the school committee budget begins with, um, what salaries and wages are looking like. So last year's budget, uh, we budgeted 250.3, uh, people for staff and a budget for salaries of a little over 19.1 million. Essentially taking the current staff and working into next year's figures, uh, we're looking at, uh, 255.3 people for a salary budget of 19.9 million. So that change is five people higher. And primarily what is driving, um, that number more than anything else is, two years ago, we started a partnership with Merrimack College in, uh, getting some fellows from Merrimack here to provide some support positions within the operations of the school district. Last year, we had five fellows working for the district and although they didn't quite translate into a one-to-one for a, for a support person on district to what they could do for us, it did provide a body, um, to work through the operations of the schools. Very successful through last year. This year, again, we had five budgeted. Um, we only received one person from Merrimack that is currently working at the elementary school. So that sort of created a little bit of a challenge in terms of the operations of the district where currently we have, uh, full long-term subs at the elementary school, um, supporting the lower grades. Um, yeah, as para, you know, paraprofessional subs. So in reviewing the Merrimack Fellowship partnership, uh, with the, uh, building administrators at our last meeting, we felt at this time, we should most likely suspend the, the fellowship program with the understanding that we need to have some, some hotter figures in terms of staffing. Not to have those four positions staffed was detrimental to the operation. Where we had to sort of pivot a little bit and go towards having, um, having some subs cover in our support positions. So adding those five, uh, support positions for long-term subs in the, in the Merrimack Fellow currently here increases your, um, your full-time equivalents to five additional staff people. So the salaries do increase to 19.9 million or a 3.8% increase, um, from this current year's budget. Next, we looked at our out-of-district tuitions and out-of-district, uh, staff roster. And based upon where myself and Sarah Lewenzic thinks, um, the numbers are going to take us, that is jumping from a little over 2 million this year to approximately 2.7 million at this time. That's reviewing, reviewing the, the current out-of-district roster as well as some of the, um, known needs that we will have for some additional students where they will most likely be going out of district next year. So that, and again, part of what's driving that increase is, um, similar to the presentation we just saw and what you heard from the special ed facilitators at Miss Lewenzic. Um, the recommended out-of, uh, out-of-district increase by the Department of Revenue that sets the rates for private tuition. Historically, it's in the 3% range. They are currently still recommending a 14% increase to, um, private tuitions, uh, for out-of-district for next year. And similar to that, the collaboratives where historically they've been about 1%. Um, we are hearing anywhere between 3 and 5% for increases for next year. So, um, that's another driver besides the roster of, uh, out-of-district students is the anticipated cost of, uh, what the tuitions may look like last, um, for next year. The next big rock is your, uh, transportation, both regular ed and specialized. Um, as you can see by the chart, regular ed transportation is actually projecting downward. Um, next year, we did, uh, reduce the, um, the fleet by one bus for this year. So we're currently operating 14 buses. So this is bringing 14 buses forward into, um, next year based upon the new rate. And for specialized transportation, again, this is looking at our, our current population and their current needs, both in district and out-of-district. Um, we're looking at 17 vans right now, um, for both. And based upon the current, uh, rates for the vans, that's an increase of about $114,000 to, um, to increase the van count. We had 14 vans budgeted for this year. We're currently operating 17. So besides the three big rocks, I always sort of throw utilities as a not-quite-big rock, but another, another item that we really need to look at, um, a little more in-depth. And those based upon the cost of a full year, last year's utilities, that's running about, uh, 10% higher or $47,000. And that is primarily usage, not rate. Um, the rates only increased minimally. And I can tell you, what I did tell the Budget Subcommittee is I do think I'll be able to, uh, do a little deeper dive on this year's utility costs because our natural gas cost for the heating season for next year is actually going down for our rate. Uh, we're currently paying, uh, $5.80-something cents a Decotherm. Um, that's going down to a little under $5.30 for next year's heating season. So, um, as we do a little, um, digging on that, I do anticipate that when we, you know, before we present the final budget, the utility figure will come down a little bit. Other than those, um, four large items, the rest of the, uh, budget centers are primarily bringing forward to zero with the exception of reducing the Merrimack Fellow line items to zero. So that's where you'll see the elementary school going down 57,000, the middle school 19, and district-wide going down 19,000. That is, uh, as a result of suspending the Merrimack program. Um, the items highlighted in yellow for cover page expenses, that, um, still needs to be further reviewed. This is basically carrying, um, the current year's number for. So as I start looking at the grant revenues for next year, some of the cover page expenses are the amounts in the grants that are targeted that aren't part of your budget, that need to be extracted and captured on this line. That also includes the money expended as part of the Lakeview lease and Mr. Woodlock's teaching and learning cycle, compromise that cover page expense line item. Pensions, again, will be very similar to last year, but again, as, as a grant review is done, we'll look at that. So since we have not looked at revenues, I basically carried forward last year, or this year's revenue number into next year, subject to review at your next meeting. So bringing the current operation forward into, into next year, it looks like an increase of twenty-three point eight million compared to twenty-two point two million for this year, or about a seven point one percent increase. During our meetings with the administrative team and the principals at each building, we talked about some additional requests. This list was much, much larger and working as a group, we did, we did isolate some items that are a definite need. First and foremost is an additional district-wide E L L teacher. Mr. Woodlock, I think you have the ratios of where we are.
Yeah, I can give you a brief idea of where we are. Currently, we're at a hundred and thirteen E L students. Once you're over a hundred, there's, there's quite a bit more work that needs to be done, rightly so, because these are our students as much as anyone else and, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that they're getting, you know, what they need on a regular basis. We have a hundred and thirteen students. We currently have six students that are waiting to be screened, that are new students to our district, so potentially a hundred and nineteen currently. We're trending for about a hundred and twenty-five next year. And we currently have three E L teachers, one of which also serves as a coordinator. So Kate Wells is the coordinator, she has additional roles in addition to meeting her caseload of students that she is overseeing. If we look at some of the surrounding districts that I've been in communication with recently, you know, they have, in, in Westford, a hundred and fifty E L students, they have five E L teachers. In Tuxbury, a hundred and forty, seven E L teachers. Barrika and Chumpford, similar numbers. So we're at the very highest range of kind of per student, students per teacher. And if we keep going where we're going this, this year into next year with three, we're going to be upwards of about forty-one students on each teacher's caseload. And again, Kate Wells also has additional duties beyond just working as an E L teacher. And what we see in surrounding communities are somewhere between twenty and thirty. So that's going to make it really difficult for, for those teachers that are here currently to get, you know, to meet the needs of those students.
Is one enough?
Well, I think we don't know until we're there, but we think that one would be adequate to get us where we need to get and then we can reevaluate. You know, obviously, it would be great to say, let's get two, but we also have other needs in the district and the budget's obviously a concern. So trying to be fiscally responsible with also doing what's right by our kids. I think one will put us in a spot to better meet the needs of our student and if that's not the case, you'll be hearing the same thing from me next year, obviously.
Thank you. One other item that we discussed at great length in terms of staffing is the elementary school had a retirement at the end of last year that we did not fill. Sort of the needs of the district sort of pointed us in a different direction. So they are currently operating at two administrative assistants over at the elementary school and it's working for them, but when one of them is out for whatever reason, they go down to one. So there was some discussion about maybe we could create some sort of long-term admin assistant position within the district who would sub to wherever the need may be, at whichever building. The rest of the items were all smaller items, surrounding some break, some breakout spaces at the middle school for population there, a very small amount to alter the physical plant. T F M is tiered focused monitoring. It's actually the special education program that is coming up for review. And again, a small amount was allocated or was brought to a need by student services. And then some updates to the Bridges reading curriculum and some updated A B A training and safety care training, again, again, all smaller amounts, but brings the current school committee budget, again, revenue being equal, which we don't necessarily know where we're going to land on that, to a, a budget request of twenty-three point nine million, again, compared to this year's twenty-two point two million. It's currently a one point six million dollar increase, or seven and a half percent at this time for a rollover cost. So that's where we are preliminarily with expenses. And again, as I mentioned, utilities is something that I'm going to look a little bit more in-depth and Ms. Lewenzik and myself will continue to work on the out-of-district roster to give the committee the, the best possible number as we finalize the budget through the next few meetings.
Joe, when you run through this exercise annually, what's that percentage typically around? So right now, we're at seven and a half percent overage, but that's without, you know, reviewing the revenues and all this other stuff. Is that typical to previous years or is that?
No, I, I think that's seven and a half percent and again, no, nothing different compared to what you heard from, from the group that was in here. There are some drivers there that seven and a half percent is probably one of the largest preliminary numbers I've seen. The out-of-district costs, you know, a fourteen percent increase on your private tuitions. Again, I'm really hoping the Department of Revenue comes off that fourteen percent, they haven't yet. I would, I would normally see this number between four and five percent. And then as we, as we work with the town, we, we start to adjust and review and see, you know, what, what the number looks like in terms of what the town's recommending. We're not alone. Many other school districts are running their preliminary budget out around eight, eight to nine percent. So I think we fall very much where other districts are doing at this time. And, and again, it's the cost drivers. I mean, I think we're fortunate that we have natural gas locked in for next winter, we have electricity locked in for all of next year, and they're, they're very good rates. So, you know, I'm pleased with that. And again, I, I mentioned the Budget Subcommittee, we'll continue to look at that out-of-district tuition number and, and give you the best possible number as we finalize the budget.
Are you hearing anything from your counterparts or maybe Mr. Woodlock, you're hearing something? Is the state talking about kicking in additional funding this year or is this really on the towns to manage?
I haven't heard anything. I wish I would hear something, but.
Yeah, I would remember that.
I mean, what, what they have done is they've actually delayed when the preliminary budget used to come out the last week in January. I've heard that they're not talking about rolling that out until much later in the, in the year, probably closer to March. And, you know, usually we get a very minimal increase at twenty-five dollars per student on chapter seventy. That's the minimum amount that the, the state's supposed to give us. I have not heard anything about kicking in any additional monies.
Thank you.
So Joe, if we're not going to hear, if we're not expected to hear from the state about their budget until March, how do we deliver budget to the Board of Selectmen in a timely manner?
So, so generally, what, what we will do in the process is the superintendent, myself, will, will meet with the town manager and the town accountant at some point in this process to get, to get his views on where the town's finances sit. And again, I think if we, you know, the increases on chapter seventy have been twenty-five dollars per student probably the last three, three to four years. Pre-pandemic, it was twenty-five. So it, it hasn't changed much over, over the last few years. So anticipating anything more than twenty-five dollars a student, I don't think is realistic. I think the state, again, is dealing with, with many of the same things that we're dealing with at a local level. And what we may see as we start doing the deeper dive in revenue and the town certainly seeing it is all of the COVID money that the federal government was giving ourselves and the town is now not there. I mean, we've been lucky that we've been able to piece together some, some of the revenue and not spend it until next year and then, you know, your S R two grant expires in September of twenty-three, your S R three grant expires in September of twenty-four. So we have, you know, the, the funding in the S R three grant that we haven't utilized yet purposely to prevent that revenue number from crashing when we look at the revenue figure. So again, I'm not sure if, if it's going to be that, as high a number as we have for, for last year, but certainly, you know, I think we've acted in our best manner to keep it as palatable as possible when we look at revenues.
And when, I, when do we have finance, the FinCom coming? Is it the last meeting of February?
Don't have the calendar in front of me. I don't know if it's February, February or the first one in March, it's in that timeframe, see the last one. I think it might be that last week in February, after February vacation.
Any other questions for Mr. Messina?
Thank you.
Mr. Messina, you're still up with?
Still up. All right. Very quickly, signing of bills, they are bouncing around. There were thirteen warrants presented to the committee tonight. In your drive is a list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts. No signing of payroll at this meeting, we will catch up at the next meeting. And for the first time in a while, and I apologize that it's been delayed, but there is a December twenty-twenty-two financial package, which actually includes your budget as of January sixteenth. It's a new report, it's off of our current accounting system. It's a little busier than I like, but it's the best one that I seem to be able to find in my search of munis. Also, your evolving account balances at the end of December and the student activity accounts at the end of December. And I have the January first enrollment listed, Madam Chair, if you have those.
Sure. So at T E S, we have seven hundred and sixty-six students. At T M S, we have four hundred and five students. At T H S, we have four hundred and fifteen. We have twenty-four out-of-district students for a total of one thousand six hundred and ten students.
Thank you, and that's it?
Great. School committee discussion, actually, before that, does anybody have any questions from Mr. Messina on the December package? All right. School committee discussion, Nate?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Christine?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set, thank you.
Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Messina, for all of the hard work you've done getting the budget packets together so that we can review them. And a thanks to J C J, La Field and Fontaine for coming out tonight and near and dear to my heart for the safety. I loved hearing from Fontaine Brothers, all the steps they're taking to keep our kids safe. So that's all I got.
Right?
Yeah, I want to thank J C J, Fontaine, La Field for coming out tonight. It's never an easy conversation when you have to ask for more money, so I appreciate them, you know, coming and having that conversation with us.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Woodlock?
Also, I'm all set, thank you.
Just speaking to the school building committee in the budget, as a member of the school building committee, we are pushing back as much as we can on the budget while still trying to deliver what we told the community that we were going to deliver. It's, it's a tough balance. A lot of the questions that you asked tonight had been asked in the school building committee meetings, so, you know, we do, we are asking the tough questions as a school building committee as well, but it was also good to hear come from you as well, so thank you for that.
We have faith in you.
All right. Great. So with that, we have no need for executive session tonight and I will seek a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries six zero zero, we're adjourned, thank you.